I hope that I already had a chance to look over the minutes from four twenty-four, twenty-seven, five first, and five two. Did anybody have any changes that they feel like needs to be made to any of those? And Ronnie, Tony, I mean, I'm sorry, John corrected where he does all the parts.
Okay.
Interviewed me, he checked, he said that you can call and question that, and I said, no, they weren't in part, he's on third.
They're on part.
And he thought since you said it, it's a table, it's all in part.
Yeah, we shouldn't have been there at all.
Well, yeah, you could've been, it was a public meeting, you could've been there. I just said, I said, I'm always, that's the reason, and when they ask any questions, I say, I can't, I can't.
Yeah, we just wouldn't have been there.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, you wasn't part of it, no, you didn't, you wasn't part of it.
It's one half, every other.
Okay, so everybody's okay with the minutes for tonight?
Are we gonna vote on them as a whole, because we can't vote on them like?
No, no, we're gonna have to do a minute each one. Okay, on the mayor's report, I have to report that we're supposed to be reinstated with that surplus equipment stuff, Allen Busler's sent a letter to him, and we're supposed to be receiving something in the mail any day now for that. We haven't gotten it yet, he's on call. We got an update on RDS, we're supposed to start receiving our payments at the end of the month on what business licenses and stuff they've collected so far for us. We're supposed to be, Tommy sent an email today since he's owed his business license, and we should start receiving our payments by the end of this month. Blackjack Road, we have, we got an update on that, we'll be getting a lot of complaints on Blackjack Road, I spoke with Ken Crowe today, he's gonna talk, speak with county engineer Dan Donkey, and when I spoke with Dan Donkey last week, he said that, that they should have that road be repaired, you know, that's a county road, so the city doesn't have any control over it, but I have been in contact with him, asking him if they can please do something to try to repair the road, because we have, do have a lot of citizens that use that road. And county engineer Dan Donkey said that they should have that road completed by July. And Ken Crowe said he's gonna see if he can hurry him up a little bit, hurry them up just a little bit on that. And he said he himself came and drove the road after he was seeing all the complaints on Facebook and everywhere, and he said it's not as bad as they're saying it is.
It never is.
But he, he said that he is gonna try to hurry him up.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's loitering it was last year before they put the car on gravel.
Okay, Ronnie, do you have anything to report?
Other than what's on your agenda?
Do I need to read those ordinances and those resolutions?
Not verbatim, they certainly need to be discussed.
Okay, can I get you to read those, because I have trouble swallowing tonight, I have to, I have to stop at this track, stable once again.
The, both ordinances, might read completely through them?
Uh-huh, do we have to read them over here?
Not, I know it's supposed to be the second reading of the ordinance, but that's not to say that the ordinances have to be read aloud verbatim, if you'd like for the audience to...
Can you not read them tonight, can you read them?
I'll do that.
I'm having trouble swallowing tonight. Okay, we got the police report, Mike Jennings is gonna be giving that tonight, the fire report, you practice there for that, our road report, Ronnie and Courtney on that, y'all have anything that needs to be?
Just the McCartney field.
And people want to know when the rest of the roads that got voted on get tarred and gravelled or what's going on.
We're at the county's mercy.
And that's the county that's doing that?
Yeah.
Have you talked to anybody about that?
I talked to Dan Donkey, we're on the list, but they cannot tell us exactly how far down the list we are. He said that it depends on the weather.
I know some of them are getting pretty bad potholes.
I can feel like they might come when they're doing, working on Blackjack Road.
That's what's...
And probably try to do it all.
Okay.
He said, he said that, he said that we're on the list, but as far as to tell us when, it depends on the weather, it depends on...
I just got people that stopped by the house and answered, okay.
But we, but we have got, oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, there's sixteen, sixteen roads, right?
Uh, yeah, but then we're gonna have to pick and choose out those roads, every road's not gonna be fixed, which is why we have to pick the worst roads to fix. That's just the list that Daryl and him came up with.
We, we had a list of like five or six that we were supposed to do.
Yeah, but anyway, um...
I guess that's sixteen, right?
I called myself needing to bring that list, because I'm, we're not ready, so we ain't ready for the next meeting, but, um, do y'all have anything else to add other than McCartney?
And we met with, would be excused, we met with the people that's supposed to do work under Hickory Valley.
Followed others.
The drip ramp and ditch, and they said about two weeks.
Yeah, only second he want to start, provided he, he needs a week of good dry weather, if we don't want him out there and start that excavation and then get rain and we make more problems.
Do we get cleared for Ms. Caraway?
Tear, yeah, we don't want to tear her place up anywhere from that, too.
We, we have not got, yeah, it started raining that day, and I told him, when he was free, and I called him, go over there and see if she mind.
Okay, you got clearance from the Bradley side to put the riprap on there to get them to haul across there everywhere?
Both sides. Who's Bradley?
Right there, me Bradley, right there, where the, where part?
Why would they need to be there?
Well, he asked till we get permission, so he stole riprap.
Oh.
And he said that's fine with him, he said he just wants to do whatever he has to do with this thing, so. Jim Leek, he said there's no complete map report, he's not gonna be here tonight. Team council, Ms. Emma Owens, she may come in. We've got the fire and rescue agreement and the passing of the ordinance, I don't, I think y'all have that in?
To build the insurance companies, I saw that.
Yeah, and the thing, and you know that Attorney Barnett has suggested that maybe we might want to think about doing that ourselves instead of turning it over to...
Well, it's, the document is drafted just in case you all decide you think you have enough resources with the future. So, to my point, drafting the document is not just assume that you're gonna use a particular company, obviously, you pass the ordinance and allow it to happen, but then at the next meeting, this will be the first time you reviewed it really, at the next meeting, you consider the agreement that that company has presented to you. And so you've got the ordinance in place, you can, you can go about it internally, hire this company, another company, whatever, it's just what we...
How long a term are they working a contract for? Did you know yet?
It is in the document, and I forget this...
Do you know mine, right offhand?
I think it was, it may have been annual contract. I don't, I don't think that it was very effective, but, and it's a terminate at convenience type of contracts, and so you terminate it whenever, that's the way I would draft it if I go back over it. I did redraft the agreement, I did make minor changes to the ordinance, the ordinance, overall, the ordinance was not bad, but I did present it up there.
One year, one year, then continue until you give a third day notice.
Third.
I can see something wrong with that.
And so we can, I'll bring that back to you at the next meeting maybe, for the agreement itself, but the ordinance is, at the present time, I don't think we're capable of doing it ourselves, a year from now, we might be able to.
We got so much other stuff, we're trying to sort it out.
So, so, and so do we, do we want to pass that tonight?
I think pass it, but like I say, I would go ahead, the next meeting, like he's recommending in this, a contract with these people for a year, after we look at older and see that everything looks okay, and he thinks so.
So we're just gonna do the first reading tonight?
It's up to you, you can do unanimous consent to consider it tonight and just have it done, and as long as you have unanimous consent to consider it a reading, that's the way that's done.
And it's revenue immediately.
So, Anne, you want to bring that up for tonight? If we can do it tonight, I'm not going to go ahead and do it over.
So the first, the first vote would be for the council to consider it tonight as opposed to going to a second reading, that has to be unanimous, once that's done, then you vote on, and then the actual, sort of legal...
Did you get that, Dean? To consider it, to start with?
With one reading next to it.
Okay, our back to school, sales tax holiday is in July, you should have that in your packet there. From state of Alabama, what it is, is for the schools, back to school, and everyone can do this in July this time instead of August, and basically, we've done this in previous years, since now, especially since we got a dollar general, I feel like it would be something good for our community, for our parents trying to get their kids back in school for next year, and it's basically just saying that, that if we can, due to the Act 2017, one, uh, one twenty, that there's a period from beginning at twelve oh one AM on Friday, July the twenty-first, and it ends at twelve midnight on Sunday, July the twenty-first, and during that period, there's not any sales tax charged on back to school supplies and stuff, but we have to send this back to the state, and it has to, that has to be in there by June the twenty-first for us to be counted in that. So if y'all want to look over it, I think I brought this up last time.
We can go ahead and take care of it.
So if y'all want to go ahead and take care of it tonight or what, but basically, it's just, you know, for that period of time, we don't, they don't have to pay sales tax on, on any of that. Does somebody want to bring that up tonight, and just take it for a vote?
Yeah, we'll, nobody else can.
Our document, Attorney Barnett has gotten that, where the flyers and all the literature was being thrown on the streets, he's got that, ordinance drawn up, the unsolicited publications that's being thrown in the streets and everywhere, he's got that, did y'all have a chance to look over that? And I would like for us to try to hurry and get this taken care of as soon as possible, get something in place, because Daryl is having trouble trying to keep up, trying to pick all that stuff up off the streets, I mean, he's just, especially when it rains, I mean, they're just everywhere, they're just everywhere. So I would like for us to try to get this passed as soon as we possibly can. Do y'all need more time to look over that, or do y'all want to go ahead and vote on that tonight?
We do.
Have y'all looked at it?
I think we can vote on it.
So you need to look over it then, before? I thought we brought it up last meeting.
We did discuss it last meeting.
And you did, since when? Okay, well, you were kind of looking over that, we can go back to that and did it, JW and T proposal for addition survey. Tony, do you want to explain that, since you spoke to him about that?
Yeah, that's what we discussed at the last meeting, that they needed for, to finish the design on the side here, we're talking about getting some boundary information on the side, and also carrying a topo out to the property on both sides, managing our property, and also up behind the maintenance building, basically where the tow道 slopes at, and that's just to facilitate the design of our campus here.
There's a charge for that of thirty-five hundred dollars?
And at the time we got that, he said it was about two weeks now, around, we were, that was, whatever day we got that, so I don't know.
April the twenty-seventh, April the twenty, April the twenty-seventh, twenty, what's on the, the letter?
Right. So that's not a guarantee that that's the same schedule, so, that's what it does.
Is everybody okay with going ahead and voting on that, and those kids are taken care of? Anybody have any issues with that, that we need to postpone that or anything? Okay, Tony, you want to make that motion now, Mr. Evans? Also, Drew Baffert is here with Dex and Jim, he's been trying to get an appointment for, ever since almost we've been in office, so he's gonna explain about the copiers for the fire department and, you know, naming of city auditor, usually the mayor gets the opportunity, you know, gets that, the choice of the auditor, but I want to ask y'all's permission to just go ahead and use Ben Corr, that's who's been doing it, because I think everybody I've spoken with has spoke very highly of him, and I feel like that, but I have asked him to come before the council to explain the audit to everybody, because it, you know, before, that has not been happening, and I'm also asking him to make sure that every council member gets a copy of the audit, so that...
Maybe that's required by statute.
Right, you know, that has not been happening before, but we, we're gonna make sure that happens this time, and he's okay with doing that, so if y'all have any objection, I want us to go ahead and get started. He said that he's on vacation right now, but he knows he started on the twenty-sixteenth audit in a couple of weeks, if that's all right with everybody. We've gotta have an audit, so, and I think we need to just go ahead and use him, because I spoke, everybody I spoke with spoke very highly of him, has had any decisions or anything with him, since he already knows our group, I think we're, we'll probably be better off by doing that. Does anybody have any questions or anything on that? Municipal workers compensation, we received a bill after our audit, that we knew that we owe them two thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, and we needed to, somebody to make a motion for us to go ahead and pay them the difference in what our audit was, they do this every year, and everybody knows that usually when they do the audit, we end up having to pay it all for. So someone would need to make that motion for us to go ahead and pay them, or re-pay them. Everybody up there? Advanced disposal, we received a bill that nobody has ever seen, it just came in this week, last week, I'm sorry, for three thousand twenty-five dollars, and this is from the dumpsters that was ordered in July of twenty sixteen, that was never paid by the previous administration, and we do owe that, they had to come out and tell you on the bill if you received it, how many times they came out and emptied the dumpster and all that stuff, so we need somebody to make a motion for us to go ahead and, and pay them.
You said we just got that, does that mean they, the bill does for that prior?
Amanda said, Amanda said she is not seeing it.
Yeah, I received a phone call like last week, and she was addressing this issue, and I said I don't have an invoice to pay that, that's why it's not paid, so I can't do anything without an invoice, and then I let her know it had to be brought before the council and mayor report a check would be back.
I remember.
I remember us doing it.
At a meeting approving.
I know, we did it, I'm just concerned that that was in July, we haven't gotten it.
It never been brought up for payment.
They haven't sent us a statement.
But it could've been on their part, and it could've been on, they lost it in the mail, or, you know, you just don't know.
Over you, Ren, get the crazy horses, it okay, discuss that up.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions about that? Eight, 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 five. Okay, um... We also will have to reschedule the meeting on five to twenty-second, if everybody, everybody knows that we'll be at conference that, that, during that time, so we're either gonna have to change the meeting to, let's see, I don't have mine.
Tony, this may be our chance to take over again.
Well, y'all could, there'd be a quorum, there'd be a quorum, there's four of us, there's only gonna be two of us. There was only gonna be two of us, it's gonna be gone, so if y'all wanted to help the meeting on?
We threatened to take over a coup while y'all are in Washington.
But yeah, y'all could now, it doesn't have to be, the twenty-second is on that Monday, so we'll be in conference, we won't get it the twenty-third, we could either do it the meeting on the fifteenth, that Monday before, the next, the twenty-ninth is Memorial Day, so we don't want to do it on Memorial Day, because a lot of people will be out of town and stuff.
Well, no, we just do it like the Thursday after y'all get back.
And Andy suggested that we maybe do it on the twenty-third when we get back, but we're not gonna get our classes at five o'clock.
No, I'm talking about the twenty, that would be the twenty-fourth I'm talking about.
That's a Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
I mean, we, we, well, the twenty-sixth would be Thursday then, or when do you get back? Twenty-second is what?
I don't really want to have a meeting after I come back, I'm setting classes.
I was thinking that we wouldn't get, wouldn't get back.
We, the, the class is not open until five o'clock.
I know, but what day?
We have the traffic.
What day is that?
The twenty-third is the last day.
The last day, yes.
So the twenty-fourth is what I'm saying.
Twenty-fourth is Wednesday, Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday or Thursday.
Does anybody else have any preferences to any other day?
I mean, obviously, doing the fifteenth's a week from the day.
Or if y'all, if y'all can have the meeting without us, I mean, it's just up to y'all, but I'm gonna, if we're gonna be gone on that Friday, I mean, that Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we gotta have time to look over the material. So we're looking at thir-
Twenty-fifth, Thursday.
Thursday to twenty-fifth.
I don't see anything wrong with, on Thursday.
Is that all right with everybody else, for us to change it to the, the Thursday to the twenty-fifth? Do you want, do you have another idea for the other?
It'll be a short meeting, that's up to us.
We said we'd be good for you? What about you, y'all guys?
I don't care, I thought y'all did good Wednesday.
Ronnie?
I just need to know in advance, I'd like to schedule it work.
Well, you would know in advance if we were tonight.
Yeah, I mean, it don't matter.
We did the twenty-fourth, okay with you? Anne's, it aren't with you? Wednesday, twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I can afford it.
So we'll change that meeting to May twenty-fourth, same time, right?
Yeah, and that'll keep us kind of spaced out like we, like it.
Oh, you are up there, so. Also, we need to add to the agenda today, we only got this bill, get Friday, was it Friday week, McCarthy? McCarthy, was it Friday today?
No, today.
We got it today, we contracted with them to do Bill Smith and Tommy O'Smee roads, and the original price was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, it was a little more, because gas has gone up and the fuel, the oil prices and stuff, so it was a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, I mean, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven dollars and eight one cents.
I told Amanda we need to get them to send us copies of those load tickets and check them against ours.
So do y'all want to hold off on paying this until they send those tickets?
Yeah, and as soon as we can verify, you know, because mistakes are made, and if it's more load, it's nearly two thousand dollars.
I agree with that.
It's standard practice.
Should we hold or check it till that, I'll verify, we approve or verification that meeting?
They, they'd be surprised if they get it before the next meeting anyway. I mean, they took them two, three weeks to send it.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table that until the next meeting then, do we wait to verify?
Well, we'll get, get them to, and I can come help a little bit if you need me to.
Well, you know, Wednesday's amended, I studied, so would you write a note for John so that he may, make sure that we verify and get, get tickets to verify?
And it's, they won't be insulted or anything, or think we're bad, and it's just standard practice. I mean, about every month, our bills are on at the office, because they get, it scales at the asphalt plant, they're all in a hurry, and they'll, they may forget to change from Massey paving to McCartney paving or something, and the ticket gets made out to the wrong somebody sometimes.
Also, the software purchase for the fire department, Chief Plant has provided everyone with a copy of the information that he, he received, two thousand nine hundred and forty for the new thing, and he's gonna talk about that in his report when he does the fire report, if that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, I have no any questions presented to me, but some of the members didn't think that what Mike was presenting to the council was either complete or, or whatever, so he decided to get it in writing, so he did leave it in.
That's good, that's good.
So there wouldn't be any misunderstanding.
Okay, and he also, he's gonna explain this in his meeting, he also said there was something else that's come out, since he found out some of this information of another program that supposedly to help with this same one, so he can explain all that when he, when he does his report tonight.
Well, we just want to make sure there wasn't any misunderstanding, that, you know, that nobody was getting this way, that, or, 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 or the information that we give them.
Also, Mr. Bo, uh, Councilperson Bozen had brought up the property at eight eighty-five Yankston Highway, you, you had some questions about that?
Yeah, what we're gonna go about, yes.
He called up, and now it's behind him.
Business license, did anybody check?
Uh, he, he hasn't, but it's also been brought to my kitchen, that somebody else don't have any business license, that has done some work here, and needs to, to check on that, so I have spoken to Mr. Evans, and they're supposed to be trying to bring something in, so I suggest that we, I guess get the attorney to go ahead and send something to them, because I think it's unacceptable, because it's supposed to be a monthly payment, and that's not happening.
That's what I'm saying, he's a violation of color, right?
But it's three months again, I mean, every, it's been behind more than that.
That's all we can say.
So, could you send something? I think so, I don't, I think we have a choice, but. Does anybody else have anything else to add? Oh, yeah, in y'all's package, y'all should've got a request from Carl Chambly, our judge, if y'all, if y'all were aware, our chief clerk for court has, the vehicle has died.
It's seized.
Uh-huh, and, you know, it's been, been what, since twenty-twelve that that vehicle's been died, closer to than died exactly then, so he's still driving that vehicle, and up until Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, and, so he had, he had Daryl take it down to Harbison's, and they said it's gonna cost six hundred, and don't ask me what kind of parts it needs, because I have no earthly idea of that, he says it's gonna cost six hundred and something to, to fix it now, and it's also gonna have to have a, I think he said a fuel pump, I may be wrong on that, but it's gonna have to have another part, which is gonna bring it up to close to a thousand dollars in defense.
And then it'd be worth three hundred dollars.
Uh-huh, it might, it might, but anyway, in this letter, you'll see, he's, he says, as you know, our chief clerk's motor vehicle is desperate, uh, in need of repair, I hereby request that the city authorize the purchase of an appropriate new vehicle for the clerk paid for from funds the court currently has in the MCJF fund, as you know, Mr. Soaks travels many miles for the city than the court, and needs a form of transportation that is dependable and gives good mileage, there are approximately sixty-seven thousand in the fund, this is a fund exclusively dedicated to the court system, so you can't spend that money on anything except the court stuff, like you could, if we wanted a metal detector or something like that, you could spend, spend it on those kind of things, but it has to be used for the court. So, do we get the vehicle fixed? And y'all should've gotten this email, did y'all, everybody get a copy of this?
I think we need to find out what, what type of vehicle they've got in mind, and...
I think that, that basically, we have, there's gonna be a vehicle, I think it needs to be off of a vehicle list somewhere.
Yeah, we know that, but what kind of vehicle? Is that a little SUV, or a car, or a little pickup truck?
Basically, he don't make no world, right? So, horrible, it'd be, no more even, I'm, Daryl guessing, I don't know.
Wouldn't it be better to have a full car drive just in the city?
Where on does he go?
He has to go, well, it, it could benefit him in a way, because he has to go to the jail, like if there's a domestic violence or something like that, they have a certain period of time that they have to go, and they fail, and all that stuff, he has to go interview them and everything, he goes to the courthouse, Ashville.
But he's not transferring any poor people?
No, 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 he's just, he, he just has to go and make sure that they, he has to go see them after a certain period of time, I don't know, I think he says twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, something like that. Twenty-four?
No.
He has twenty-four to make contact with.
Pickup truck might be something you could pass on to another department when you purchase it next quarter or something?
I don't, I don't know, I mean...
I don't know, I'm sure you got a mail disposal, I don't want to do something with the old one.
What did you say, Anne, how did you know what you asked, what did you ask?
Is it okay to pass it on to another department after we've used it?
No, I think it has to be strictly used for court.
Has to be used for life, if it gets to that point, if it gets rid of another department, says, hey, you're okay, it, one is compensated.
Okay, that's like I'm talking about, Tommy used to drive a little pickup truck, and now it's in his straight department. Because like I'm talking about, Tommy used to drive a little pickup truck, but now it's gonna be straight to court.
And what, what did you ask him?
That's what she was asking, yeah.
One just depreciate it out, as soon as it decides to move on, it, it could be transferred to another department with ship problems.
So if we could surplus that.
But, you know, it, uh, we need to, you know, check and see if it's, if, you know, if we do purchase one, uh, I know, I, I think the vehicle's down at Harbison's now, and is it up there, does that bring it back? Uh, he said something back, he's gonna try to draw that up here, so, uh, I didn't know if it came back or not, but, uh, we need to decide, are we gonna try to fix it, are we gonna try to get something else, um?
Back when Mike was driving it, we bought, we bought him the new truck, because he felt like it was unsafe, uh, and he need.
Don't put Tommy in.
So Tommy's been driving for how many years?
It was used when I, I drove for ten years.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and for what Mike needed it for, it wasn't, it was a long distance and things like that.
Well, if that's valid, I think we should pass it on to the police chief.
And I had to push it.
It's guilty of me dealing on it, too, so.
Yeah, well, that's just something to think about, you know, now he's driving, you're right now.
Find out from, from him and the judge what they suggest, I mean, we don't, we, we really.
Or Tommy, the judge won't care, or whatever.
Look on the bid list and see what is available on the bid list, and go from there as far as expenditures and. Because if we buy a brand-new car, then we wanna get it from the bid list, if we don't buy a brand-new car.
We won't.
We can buy, we can buy used vehicles from the bid list too, because they have used vehicles.
If you got a new, and he's driving for thirty years, I mean, I think.
You know, we definitely. But we, but we do know that they can always use that money for court, they made it.
And it's so much cheaper to buy off that bid list than what we can buy a car, don't make sense not to.
But right now, he's driving, uh, we don't have to vote on it tonight or anything, but right now, he's driving one of the old police cars, uh, so he's getting back and forth, uh, to the courthouse, to the jail, and that kind of stuff. Um, so, um, you know, just think about it, and then we'll, you know, somebody have, at our next meeting, we can come up with some.
Just ta, just have him look things over and, and think what he thinks is practical.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else to add tonight?
Who can look at the bid list?
Two quick things.
Anybody.
I forwarded everybody a copy of the, the actual contract, the original planning commission. And we've already approved that, but I just wanted to make sure that nobody had any questions after we got the actual contract. And also, if anybody had any questions, my survey department, the agenda's blocked in, so we can ask it. And I saw the regional planning left about four dollars on the table. Four whole dollars.
Where are they at on returning the shelter?
Okay, and I, I'll remind you too, the mayor's breakfast is in the morning, if anybody can go.
Misses Burghill. Yeah, we're working on planning on that, we're working on that, so that's the last, last hurdle.
So Tommy, uh, Tony, do you wanna bring that up tonight for, um, to choose that site, or we, have, we already chose it?
No, we haven't chosen, right now, we're kinda playing. Right now, we're playing time against best information. I've gotta call Mr. Culpepper and check in with him again to make sure we don't get too far down that road. It's a matter of either we choose the site based on less information, and take the chance of we get it right, if we don't, or we let the time play out, and choose a location, and right now, we're, we're allowing time to play out. And if we get to the point where the time's an issue, then we gotta tell him, so I think that maybe we wanna have a backup plan. That's, they told us we needed to make a primary choice, then if we have to, in midnight hour, go to secondary.
I thought we was gonna make a recommendation.
He's gotta make. Right, but that really, that, that secondary location really doesn't matter, you know, because what they do, and the reason they did this location, is once you send it to them, they're gonna run a historical study on that, and wet ones and that kind of thing, but they're only gonna do that on the primary site. So if we choose a primary site, a secondary site, and then midway through the process, we say we need to switch to secondary, it comes out, it goes back in again.
But, but we got the grant, by the end of the night.
No, not if it, not if, not if it gets hung up, then if you get the project.
I understood the other way, I understood, go, go on with the grant and get it, and then we have to change the site, it just slows down the project itself, but it didn't affect the grant.
No, I hadn't heard that.
Still a bad seed.
Now, I guess if you've already got the grant, then I don't know what you do at that point. So that's, that's where we're at right now, we're kinda playing time to get the best decision. So what I was gonna say was that we need to have a backup plan, yeah, if Mr. Culpepper picks up, so he calls me three days from now, says, hey, I've heard from the state, we gotta get this in now, and we wanna go ahead and have a backup plan, so we can say, all right, this is.
We don't, we run the, we don't have a plan, we're gonna have to run the risk of losing that grant. So I, I say that we need to, instead of losing the grant, we need to come up with a plan, so that we can go ahead and, if, if he calls you, we can go ahead and get, you know.
Yeah, I think that needs to be a backup, if we get to that point, so we need to decide which one's primary and which one's secondary.
Didn't we pretty much agree this was primary or?
Well, that's where our discussion was going last time, and I don't think we're all agreeing.
We gotta.
See, that one's gotta be primary, and that one's secondary, that one's primary, and that one's secondary. We were talking about saving money, living there.
And we've gotta save money, because everything else is costing us.
So, yeah, I'd like to get that, get the agenda, if you can, if everybody's not agreeing to do that.
Also, we're gonna need to add to the agenda, uh, the plot plans for Mr. Avran.
Avran?
Um, 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 he's changed the wording, and the attorneys will get over it, he said the wording's okay, so somebody needs to make that motion. We need to add that to agenda, to the agenda, and, um.
Ronnie, you've been doing that, I've, I've seen. I've been doing this, I think for years, I probably worked, I, I, I talked to, apparently, he said, I think, say, you got any decisions on it?
Does anybody have anything else to point in the session? Man?
Well, there were one of, I mean, at that, um, meeting that we had the other night, we, I think Tony was kinda competing for what the attorney had told him about the opening back, did you, I forgot what he was talking about, and so they do explain, unless it's a whole.
Yeah, what, what do we, so we had, we had the interviews with the clerk. So we appointed the interview committee, but I think based on what you, what I understood from your explanation after that, is it really could've been, since it had to be an open meeting, it could be the whole council, I mean, how else does that affect us, a day-to-day operations, or, or that kind of thing? If we, um, you get information that flows in from somewhere, and is sent out, how does that, how do those type of things, how are they handled as part of open meetings? What we're questioning is if, if it can be handled in an open meeting, why are we not just doing it in a council meeting?
You can, you certainly can, absolutely, and.
Why not made a committee?
Well, if it's for some reason more expedient, there's, there's a, some of the reasons I can't think of right now, to have a smaller number, look at it, all, everybody can't make it, or something like that, if, if the committee is identified to vet through the applicants, that still has to be noticed, that's, that's to avoid decisions truly being made by a subcommittee that went wrong to the full council and just rubber sand. So, now, so that answers your question, you, you're, you're scenario, I have like three questions.
Well, yeah, and I guess I'm wondering things like, um, I went to meet with contractor last Thursday night, Winston's, I went there for Thursday. So, uh, Mr. Mashy and I went and met with him, and, you know, there was possibility that, that Bowman was gonna be there as well, so that's three of us. Does that fall outside of the guidelines? I mean, I guess we're trying to figure out the guidelines.
Well, and.
It had already been voted on, uh, previously, before y'all met.
Yeah, but everybody driving by on the road up there don't know that, they don't, we're having a secret meeting.
You can't avoid that part of it.
That's what the sunshine mall was about, you know.
Will, it's not corn or.
Will.
What you said was a critical point, the decision had already been made by the council, there was nothing else that you were gonna discuss to bring back to the council, so that's the critical point. It's the issues that are being deliberated by the forum, then being brought to the council for a decision, that's the best.
Minus other people. Everybody's not privileged to say the information, if you do it the way we've done it, perhaps.
What I'm saying is, is, oh, right there's one of our applicants, and she was sitting here, uh, and we're not, we weren't comfortable trying to discuss it back and forth with all of them present, and, and, and I, I couldn't say, well, uh, she flunked out of third grade, and y'all, I know something personal that I don't think, you know, if I think somebody shouldn't be in that position, I'm not free to say it in front of the other applicants, or.
Well, you can't say it, that, that, but it doesn't, I'm not saying any of that's easy, because it's gonna be difficult on elected officials to do that kind of thing, but once you narrow it down to three applicants, you've gotta discuss all the blemishes of each applicant, if you're gonna discuss them at all, you've gotta discuss them in a public meeting. Then the subcommittee versus the whole, that's a choice, if, if you wanna have the committee of the whole, by all means, go for it, but the subcommittees for those kind of purposes, especially when it comes to job reviews, you've gotta discuss it and advertise in public meeting, uh, just like you were as if you were meeting in the whole. And because you're discussing the issue, to be brought back to the council, and that was a, a recent change, most, one of the most recent changes to that ad. And, uh, that's, it, it's not easy, this is really not.
So let's, let's take out, let's take out the fact that we had voted on that particular issue that we were discussing, so what if we find out, we get a call from A.D.M., guys contacted, and, uh.
About when you're speaking of open meeting, at any point, if you all want legal advice from me about a decision you're gonna make like this, you're welcome to go into executive session, that's the privilege of, you know, if you're gonna take action, it could lead to litigation, criminal litigation, you know. Because you don't take that, that action, you're welcome to talk to me in the executive session, if you want, sorry, darling.
No, that's fine, I, I just gonna say, let's go back to that same situation, what if we had not been voted on yet, we got a call from A.D.M., there's an issue, and I'm gonna go out and look at it, he's asked us to go out and look at it.
And we did that, actually, we did do that.
I picked up the phone, I called, uh, Mr. Mashy, Mr. Bowman, say, guys, can we go out and look at this, put our hands together, is that a violation?
It could be, and what you want to avoid is the forum discussing the issue.
So as long as we're less than a quorum, we're okay with that?
Yeah, okay, that's right, sorry. And, you know, that's the kind of things you have to avoid in a public meeting, you have, you have to enter those kind of situations, um, as less than a quorum. You know, you see somebody driving up, and they're more important, but you're making the situation, you just.
And I was, let me ask you, what is a quorum in our case?
Well, all of you, including the mayor, that's, you know, half, half, that's quorum.
So it'd have to be all of?
That's right, four, has to be four of you, and there you go. But if, if you had a subcommittee of three, you still have to follow that justification for them.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else?